This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Select and the Town in the Canaan. November, Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Top items to add to the agenda. First is a highway loader. Transmission. And also a police department boiler. So you have these on your. And that's and. I would move we amend the agenda to add these items.
I'd like to add an additional item, move to add a general item with respect to the new Canaan Police Facility. Discussion, discussion thereof. Yeah, thanks.
Are you moved? I second all favor.
Yep. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Public comments. This is a virtual meeting. Anybody on by virtually? No? Want to do minutes first? All right. The the minutes of our last meeting, I move we for any comments or corrections?
None, none here.
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting on November first.
Second here.
All favor. All right. Now we have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Select on an agenda topic scheduled for review and or vote comments electronically should be sent to B O S Distribution at the King. C T dot gov and we will read them in the course of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. We'll watch for those comments. But we have one in person, member of the public would like to address the, is this on an agenda topic?
It's not on the agenda, but I did send a letter about a month ago to the Board of Selectmen as well as Board Finance, Town Council, Tiger and Jen.
And it had an ARPA connection. Yes, yes.
Okay, so next time our present agenda will hear you. Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Kevin, I think you heard my comment.
I was gonna say.
I understand what it is. Several weeks ago. So my name is Rich Delaquila. I live at seventy-four Kelly Green. I had sent a letter about a month ago to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, Town Council, Tiger and Jen. Just requesting that the town look into addressing the waistline issue on Kelly Green, which as I've learned more about over the past few years and through, I think, some comments, Kevin, that you made as well at the Town Council meeting several weeks ago.
I drove down Kelly Green the other day to understand the issue.
Yeah, there there's a there and and I believe Tiger, when we've talked about it in the past, also, you know, acknowledged that something that's come up in in past years. And I was just here to do what I can to try and, you know, keep a light on the issue. I understand there are a number of initiatives going on at, you know, the various board levels. I know Tiger has been extremely busy and Jen has been extremely busy. I just feel that this is something that is a known potential issue. I think the timing of it is prescient right now. The, you know, the the lots on the street are generally not large enough to accommodate septic systems. And the septic systems that are on the street are aging out now. They're between forty and fifty years old. And I think this is a need that's very possibly going to be coming up over the near future, near to medium future. And I also think that we're in a unique position right now where the cost of addressing this could possibly be, you know, at its lowest point. The street, you know, prior to the gas expansion project was in beautiful shape. I know Tiger spent a lot of time over the years working on drainage issues there. And when I moved in almost eight years ago, it was pristine. And I'm sure that the roads can be getting some attention after the ever source project is wrapped up. My understanding is that's a significant cost driver for a project like this. I also understand that there are some significant logistical challenges in in addressing an issue like this, especially given the fact that we are a dead end street. Gravity tends to go one direction and there's a potential easement issue. What I'm trying to reconcile and and ask for some help from the town on is in, you know, pushing this a little further. Because I think the alternative to not addressing this is potentially significantly more challenging than taking on, what I understand, are some logistical challenges of working with the folks at at King's Grant. And and investigating this. I also think that it it so happens that a project like this, you know, does have positive economic value to the town. And so when we're taking these things into consideration, it's something that should be looked at. And not just in terms of the incremental revenue that would come onto the sewer system, but in in terms of the impact that it's going to have on the value of the properties on the street, which I think could go one way or the other, depending on whether or not this is something that gets addressed. So I just wanted to kind of bring.
Everybody understand the issue?
Yeah, yeah, I just could. Could you just remind me? So all of the properties saying around Kelly Green, and we've shared frequently about this, they're all on the sewer system. Is that right? Are you unique relative to the other streets in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, all the surrounding streets are on the municipal sewer system. There are fourteen homes on Kelly Green.
Right.
My understanding is there are two, possibly three homes that may be on the municipal system at the top of the street. And they may have connected privately by gaining easements through their their two homes. One's actually, I believe, a woodland address. And then there's another one that's a Kelly Green address and the homes. Trying to describe this the appropriate way, the the homes basically adjacent to them going down Kelly Green, I believe, have easements that may run under their neighbor's property to connect them to woodland. There's, you know. My understanding is is that there's probably two ways to address the issue. One is to run a line down the street, but then you have to pump up, which is probably. Not a great solution. It requires pumps which tend to fail. It requires.
We have two or three other pump locations for the sewer system, so it's not unheard of.
Not heard. Okay. Yeah, so 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 that would be one potential solution. And then the other is to get an easement that would go effectively through King's Grant. The home on eighty-two Kelly Green. Who's my next door neighbor, who actually used to own my home, I think there'd have to be an easement to go through his property and possibly part of mine on on the edge, depending on which way it was run. But we're both very supportive of that. And so there are eleven or twelve homes on the street that have a similar issue. I, you know, I I can't comment. I don't know. And Tiger and or Jen may have a better sense of this, but. There may be differing considerations depending on where they're located on the street because it is downhill. And I imagine that topography of of that impacts the perk rates in the soil and whatnot, but they are, you know, most of the lots, it's one third acre zoning. And so the lots are anywhere from a third to a little over half an acre. And and I also believe that a number of the homes where some of the homes have nonconforming reserve sites. So when failure does happen, the reserve sites are going to be suboptimal.
Thanks for bringing this to our attention. I there ought to be a process to resolve this. You know, I'm concerned Jim Cole worked on this issue for years when he lived in Kelly Green. And he wasn't able to get it done, so. It's not so much a question of money. It's what the right answer is for these residents and also for the town. So thank you for bringing it to our attention again. I think we'll we'll look strongly at a process to resolve it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Okay. Next item is the ARPA Special Appropriation Recommendations. So as you know, we've been going back and forth since July with the input from the community, the Community Foundation, Chamber of Commerce. Nonprofits, we had a meeting with the Community Foundation two weeks ago to talk about a process they will go through to. To solicit as part of their annual grant process. Nonprofits are impacted. By COVID to the extent it's affecting their mission. And so while there's a number of requests and recommendations out there, we need to just begin this process. It's starting or. You know, Newark, the city of Newark hired a consultant, I understand, to write a global plan. And when you have a strong mayor, you're able to do that like other cities. We don't have that kind of process here. We we're messy or so. I just think we need to get on with some of the ones we think are noncontroversial. And over the next, of course, the next six months, we will. Make appropriations for the various things that people wish to use our defense for. So my own, my personal view is the upper fund should be spent. And not not conserve because that's the spirit of all inflation and anything that improves the Canaan is good for the Canaan. So that's my view.
Well, I I just got this this morning. It's the first I've seen it. So, yeah, my my request would be to table this for two weeks and and I I know Tucker's been working overtime. On a number of different things, including this, because we talked about this last night. And and so I'm looking at this, I I, you know, this is a great starting point, but I I'd like. Some more time to delve into this. And and also, you know, I I've been on the record as saying I'm not necessarily. Of the opinion that we should spend a hundred percent of our funds. On new projects. I think I'm always cognizant of our taxpayers and it is appropriate and Linda, I think you can back me up. It it is not inappropriate to use our funds to replace lost revenue. Thank you.
But that doesn't mean that they shouldn't still be spent. It just removes the ARPA restrictions on the funds.
Understood.
I I think it's great. I'm happy to wait a couple of weeks and I would just suggest, and thank you, everybody for for putting this together. If if you'd be so kind to consider, just as we look at this spreadsheet, maybe giving us a sense of what a total cost of the project might be. So for instance, if someone's asking for a certain amount, I just, I think it'd be helpful to all of us if we understood, well, that's a certain percentage of a greater of a greater need. That would be one. And and I have been able to follow up on some of these and speak directly to the the contact or or advocate. And I think that's, these are all very worthwhile to be considered. So if I.
My my goal is to get this to you last Thursday, so you could, but I agree. I mean, yeah, unfortunately, we didn't get it too.
No, we didn't actually have it last last week. Not not the level of detail, but. Right, right.
Right. I don't think it's a rush here. I mean, I think.
Well, I want to I want to meet meet the December Board of Finance meeting and the Town Council meeting for this first round. The probably sixth round between now and the next six months.
Sure.
Okay, good. So we move a table list for two weeks.
Second here.
All favor. So maintenance reserve. Who's this? Tiger?
Morning.
Morning. Morning.
So this is a, this is an item that was brought to our attention or my attention from Jim. Jim Rogers has been running our plant for about thirty years. Has never said, Tiger, I'm nervous. And when he says that, you got to pay attention. So he said, I'm nervous. We, uh. This board approved purchases of a couple of pumps back in July, and we still haven't received those yet. So they're looking at a very long delay as what we're seeing in other. Pieces of equipment that we're trying to purchase. So his feeling is that if we're looking at a twenty week lead time for certain items and we don't have enough on the shelf, God forbid, there's a catastrophic failure. We should look to purchase some additional ones, replace the ones that we have, rebuild those ones we might replace. And then give ourselves a little bit of reserve in case there is a problem. We have three pump stations in town, each have two pumps, right? A primary and a backup, and they alternate back and forth to to save time. If one fails, the other can handle it up until a point, and then it can't anymore. And then we have three pump stations at the plant that have two pumps each. So we've got twelve pumps total. And the feeling is that we'd like to purchase six total pumps, three for the pump stations and three for the plant. And then replace the ones, some of the ones that we have in place, put a couple on the shelf. God forbid, there's a catastrophic failure, rebuild or or we rob the parts from some of them and then dispose of those. So we went to the Board of Finance for a special appropriation of ninety thousand dollars. They gave us that thankfully. And now we're here for the purchase of the pumps themselves. The manufacturers are going to hold their pricing from what we approved back in July. Provided that we purchased them by December fifteen, and then we're hoping to get on their their schedule and have them here as soon as possible. But again, it's still probably a twenty week lead time overall. So this is not, we're not approving the appropriation. That's approving the purchase.
We're approving the contracts for the purchase.
That's correct. Sorry if it's written poorly.
Now, it's on the Town Council agenda tomorrow for approval.
Correct.
So you'd approve subject to.
Subject to Town Council approval, never never to certain of the Town Council, so. Okay. Now that we know we're we're proving contracts, subject to the approval of the Town Council. Any questions for Tiger? What happens if pumps fail? I hate to ask.
If the pumps fail, we we, well, we wind up having Palladino come in and actually pump while we're while we're receiving. We've had that happen. One location specifically on Old Stanford Road where we had to sewer pumps, sewer trucks there, and then they would just ferry it to the plant in essence. At that point in time, we might rob a pump from another station, drop it in place. This last series of flooding, we wound up losing two pumps, basically due to overuse. There was so much volume of water coming in that they just couldn't handle it. And we had a starter fail, which then allowed one to stay open and running. And a tripped an alarm. By the time we got there, one pump had had failed. We replaced all the starters, so we shouldn't have that problem again. But again, we we can't predict what might happen in a storm event.
What's the expected life of these pumps?
They're about five years or so, and then we replace as we go. So every year, there's an annual appropriation where we come and we replace a couple. We'll take those, like I said, we either, you know, take the impellers out, take the motors out, rebuild what we can, and then get rid of the excess. So we always have at least one brand new one on the on the shelf and one rebuilt, but that's only two out of six, right? So if we had a problem at each station, we would be scrambling at that point.
And this is a supply chain issue.
Supply chain issue, yeah. Actually, the 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 pumps are ready. The the bench that they actually, they get tested. This is a bench test. And that bench needs equipment that they don't have to been then actually run the test. So the pumps are actually backing up behind the bench, unfortunately. So yes, it's a supply chain issue, which we're seeing unfortunately everywhere across the board.
More questions?
None here.
It's a good insurance.
It's a good insurance policy. Yes, yeah. At the time, we thought that one and one is fine enough where we're talking about a four week lead time. It's not necessarily a problem. We're talking a twenty week lead time comes into a completely different set of circumstances. That's why he said at that time, you know, we he's never had a problem in thirty years, but he doesn't want to go out with a problem.
With that, I move we approve this request to approve the contracts for the purchase of ninety thousand dollars worth of submersible pumps for the pump stations. And the town and the waste water facility, as Tiger described, subject to the approval of the Town Council tonight.
Second.
For the discussion. All favor. Chief Anas. Okay, Tiger.
Your next one is treated salt. Yeah. This is an annual purchase of treated salt for the highway department for the pending winter. We are part of the Capital Regional Council Governments. They run a Capital Region Purchasing Council Cooperative. And we go out to bid every year. Morton Salt was again the low bid. We have to give them minimum purchase amount. And then you double that for what would be close to our maximum purchase amount. So we have a minimum purchase of fifteen hundred total, maximum purchase three thousand. It's seventy-four seventeen a ton for a total of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. The funds are currently available on the highway department's road maintenance line item.
Up to.
Up to. Up to three thousand. Yeah, we, I did a history of the past eight years. Only once did we go over the allotment. We purchased three thousand and seventy-one in fiscal year fifteen. And then two years, we actually didn't come up to the minimum amount of fifteen hundred whereby we would actually then just purchase and and fill the shed. One year was fourteen seventy-nine seventy-five and the other was eight oh four fifty. That was in fiscal twenty. I'm sure the highway department would like that year back.
So for the questions?
None. None here.
I move we approve the request of Public Works to continue an agreement for Morton Salt for the purchase of up to three thousand tons of treated road salt, as Tiger described.
Second here.
For the discussion, all favor. Root. Why don't you take up the transmission?
Okay, so thank you for adding this item. We appreciate it. We had a. Transmission go in one of our three loaders or one of it's basically our primary loader. It's a two thousand and thirteen model. We went to Tyler Equipment, who does our transmission servicing, and the purchase price is thirty-four thousand or the the install price in the purchase is thirty-four thousand, five ninety-five seventy-six. The core of the transmission is in good shape, just needs to be replaced and rebuilt. And we're coming into winter. We have three loaders. This is one of the ones that is out on the road, actually working throughout. We have one in the yard, two on the road. This is one of the ones that's on the road. And we uh, we need it before winter, so we'd like to move this purchase along.
Questions?
The supply chain issues.
This one they have, so we we think we're good. So it's a couple of weeks for it. So that's a good thing. But again, you know, the. We don't say we want it, then somebody else is going to get it.
Question?
None here.
I move that we approve the request of Public Works to enter into a catch-up with Tyler Equipment for thirty-four thousand, five ninety-five seventy-six for transmission replacement of a highway loader. As Tiger described. Second?
Second.
Kathleen, seconds, all favor? And then the.
Boiler?
P D boiler.
Unfortunately, Billy, you want to come up? Yeah, the police department has two boilers. One of them started leaking. When we looked at it, has a section problem. One of the sections has failed. Normally, we'd look at taking it apart and replacing the section, but the supply chain issues, the the section will actually take twenty-six weeks to come here, so it'll be. April, May, out of the heating season. We can't necessarily heat the building and EMS with one boiler. It's not a, it's not a good practice, nor, I don't think, can we? So we looked at replacing the unit. C B Longo was able to find the unit. And then this unit is actually.
Tiger, when you say unit, you're talking about the whole boiler or?
Yes. You're looking at the fact that we would either that or we would go into this situation we had a lap and whereby we would rent the boiler, probably spend the same amount of money.
How how old are the boilers? We were talking about this last night that there was there was two things we would keep. If we, right. How old are the boilers?
The boilers are both different ages. The lower one there is over twenty years.
The one that's having problems?
No, the newer one was installed, I think, in two thousand.
Which one is having problems? The newer one or the older?
The newer one. Two thousand eight or nine, I think that was installed during renovations when they did over there. The boilers, they don't make the floors anymore. They're old, they're Series eighty-eight. Which is becoming more obsolete as time goes on because of no efficiency boilers that are out there.
So we'll get into this presumably later this morning, but. Is it, you guys would recommend that if we rehab the police department in place, we get new boilers?
And actually this boiler would.
Well, you have, you have to, unless you want to run the risk of going down this winter without heat, which we could then.
Well, no, and and I I mean, that's a current issue. I agree with you, but but, yeah.
I mean, I think you invest that kind of money on the building, you'd want to look at your mechanicals and that's the whole point of doing your renovations. You want to bring your mechanicals and be more energy efficient. This boiler would be a gas boiler, high efficiency, ninety-eight percent efficient.
And it could stay.
It'll stay.
Right.
And then what I would recommend would be then you, when you do the other, when you do the project, you renovate, then you put the second one in, which kind of helps if you think about it. They're not exactly the same age. One's a little older, so down the road, you don't have to have this big, huge cost of replacing two boilers at once. You can phase it in. So, you know, it's it's not the best situation, but it's tomorrow. We're in, unfortunately. And we did find a boiler, so two or ten days out to get it here. Because one that we found in the United States.
And and you're comfortable that it'll have the same level of capacity to handle the EMS building as well as as they currently do?
Yes, as it currently does, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have matched apples, apples and the B T U factor on it.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a gas-fired boiler alone.
Yes, high efficiency.
Which is more smaller and and more efficient.
Yeah.
That we've had historically. Are they less expensive? Are they less expensive than? Someone's got a racket here.
I would say cost efficient doesn't mean, energy efficient doesn't mean cost efficient.
Okay, how many boilers do we have altogether? We counted the. But if you.
Seventy.
This is a lot of boilers.
Okay. I have to ask enough questions about the boiler. I approve the request of Public Works to. Install a new C B Longo Mechanical Services, seventy-three thousand dollars total, eighty-one thousand, seven thirty. Boiler for the police department.
Second here.
Favor. Thank you. Tiger, before you leave.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda is the appointment of Paul Canag, which we referred at our last meeting. So they're planning a zoning commission for a term expiring December one twenty-three, replacing, I think, our our cast events position as an alternate. And you, you've talked to Paul and.
Yes, I have. Thanks, Paul. Good to see you again.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. If I can just share that I thank you both for allowing us to have an opportunity to speak with Paul. And thank you for that opportunity, Paul. And I again appreciate your willingness to to step forward for planning and zoning. Also, as a a follow-up to our conversation, I know you had an opportunity to speak with our chairman of P N Z and the town planner. So I appreciate that as well. I think that was a good part of the process to to make sure that anybody who's being considered for an appointed position has the opportunity to speak with those involved. And and I I gather that was a good conversation that you had.
Yes.
Okay.
Getting ready for tonight.
And they're getting ready for this evening.
I mean, I need to be ready for tonight in case you approve.
In case we, well, I I'm going to support your approval. And so and thank you for that opportunity. And I would just say, going forward as part of the process, if we could all consider that we have an opportunity to speak with the candidates and and that they also have an opportunity to speak with those who currently serve on the board, most especially the chair. So again, thank you for that opportunity.
It's going to slow our process down considerably, but.
I I can work quickly.
We can. Okay.
I agree with Kathleen.
So I move we approve the request, the appointment of Paul Canag to a alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire December one, two thousand twenty-three.
A second.
All favor? Chief Anas, go get sworn in. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, that brings us to contracts under ten thousand dollars. I didn't actually look at those. Any questions?
They're all the. Oh, it's been updated, actually.
Hey, Tucker, have you got a hard list of the contracts? Yeah.
I know some are just added. I do not. You need to go get your copy of that?
Would you mind?
If you'd be so kind, if we could just a quick update maybe from Tiger on just where we stand on these contracts with Hardesty and Hanover. Would that be okay?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. Just if Tiger, if you'd be so kind, there's a couple of number four contracts with Hardesty and Hanover, which are all traffic consulting. And if you could just give us an update as as to where they might stand, I can read off the list if you need or.
I think I'm good.
You got it.
Yeah, the so we had. One at the old Stanford Road Curve, one oh six at the curve. He came back with a series of short-term recommendations and long-term recommendations. Deputy Chief De Federico met with some of the residents last night. I have to talk to him and see exactly how that how that went. But so some of the recommendations were street lighting, overhead lighting. It's eighty percent crash reduction factor if you illuminate the area. And while that's fantastic, a lot of times the residents don't like it because it winds up shining into the bedroom, right? So we have to kind of balance out that. The other thought is to put in a centerline rumble strip and an edge line rumble strip to then notify the driver if they're a, if they're migrating off the lane. That probably wouldn't have helped anything on excessive speed. It was just, you know, at that point in time, you're not going to navigate the curve. And then there's some thoughts of additional striping, things of that nature to try to make it a little bit more prominent. Speed signs on either side tell you your speed, things of that nature. Relatively low cost, low maintenance, since it's a state road, it would have to go to the state for approval. So once we talk to the residents, find out where what they are, then we'll go to the state and then come to this board for for implementation if possible. Then we had. Kuno and Carter, the intersection Kuno and Carter, he studied around about, it would be kind of excessive, a little bit large. Problem with a couple of the driveways that are there as far as how we would navigate to get them into the intersection itself. So then he looked at trying to offset it. So that's one of the thoughts to offset the intersection as we spoke about before. Then we just got to look at if there's any issues with land acquisition or right away and then go forward from there. So it's sort of a preliminary look, then we'll take a larger look at the, kind of do a more in-depth look at that. Then we'll take a larger look at the, kind of do a more in depth look at that engineering, what that plan might look like in offsetting the two intersections. Looks like there's room, but we don't know.
Is that under the current contract with them or do you have to?
That would be second, that would be step two.
Okay.
Yeah, there's still monies available in the current contract, but probably we would need an addendum.
Okay.
Similar to same thing with old Stanford Road. The, then we had him look at the timing on Cherry Street, Main Street. As well, that's perpetually been a problem as far as you can't make a left hand turn if you're on Cherry Street, trying to turn onto Main Street's very, very difficult. So the thought is that we could take the, there's an additional lane in the middle and have that be an entire queuing lane. For and aft for cars to queue up and then actually change the heads and make a change of signal heads at that point in time and the locations to then add a left turn lane at Cherry and Main and then add a right turn at South and Cherry. They all work together at that point in time. The problem is, is the state has said that they they have no, no interest in upgrades at this present time. So we had to go through the study to then go back and show that there's a need. And then say that it's your light, you maintain that light, you manage that light. We need, you know, we need a little bit of help looking forward. But at, you know, at at the time that we spoke to him initially and for the past six, seven years, they've said, no, the timing is fine and we're fine and there's no problem and we're not going to change the light. So we had to go forward with this study to show that there is a problem. There'll be an increase in level of service. And then go back and talk to them and see exactly what that might cost and then who would be responsible at that point in time for that. And then the last one was, we asked them to take a look at police department locations at Saks and potential police department locations at Saks and at Wavine to see what the traffic.
When was that contract entered into?
No. At Wavine.
The park.
I'm sorry, high school, correct, the high school area.
When was that contract entered into?
Friday. Friday.
Friday?
Friday.
So we had a meeting last night.
Correct.
A tripartite meeting of the the boards.
Correct.
And I think we've kind of, we'll, we'll talk about this later, but. Have we paid for this, this contract?
We signed the contract. He hasn't invoiced me yet.
So is he going to do the work? Can we get out of the contract? Because.
He did.
I think it's become.
Gave us, sent us a draft. Now, I know what our thought is, we review the draft and then he finalized the draft. So we received the draft yesterday afternoon. And then at that time, we read it, digest it, and then if we have any comments associated with it, go back and give him our comments and then he'll.
Okay, so we haven't signed the contract, correct?
We did sign the contract on Friday.
I'm sorry. We signed the contract, but we're still negotiating the terms of the contract?
No, 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 no. He, he gave us his initial, he went out and did the work over the weekend.
So we're going to spend five thousand dollars for a assessment of something that's not going to take place, which is, which is, which I based upon the meeting last night that we had, I'm just, you know, it's five thousand dollars. It may not seem like a lot, but it's, it's, it's five thousand dollars. It's wasted.
We had entered into the contract prior.
Yeah, Nick, I'm happy to discuss this context of the police department.
Sure.
But.
So that was the fourth. I don't know if there's any others that, you know, we have a.
You know, when I, when I came on the board of selectmen, the threshold for board of selectmen approval was twenty five hundred dollars.
That was a long time ago.
Thanks. Yes, you can, you can tell by.
I mean, that's worth six thousand, seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I, anyway, we've gone from twenty five hundred to ten thousand. Yeah, so maybe we should go back to five.
So that was, that was.
Thank you.
We've had him look at a couple of other things, but that was prior. So we'll see exactly how that transpires. Go on and speak to the residents at Old Stanford and then we have to delve in a little bit deeper on the Carter and Canoe area and see exactly what might be the art of the possible there. But the initial read is, the work could probably be done relatively inexpensively since it's just moving the lane a little bit one way or another. It's not that overly expensive to do that if we have the land. If we don't have the land, then it becomes a little bit more problematic at that point in time. But we'll, we'll look at the second phase for each and then come back to this board for more guidance at that time.
The only other question I had is that we have a welcome to New Canaan sign. Is that a replacement or a new sign?
So we have two already, one at exit thirty seven, one at exit thirty eight. We didn't have one at exit thirty six because we were issues with trying to locate exactly where it would be because that, if you look at it, that's a very large intersection, right? You got two gore areas coming off northbound and southbound. And the thought was that how do we get the most bang for our buck so people could see it? And the thought is to be on the outside of the southbound gore area. So the southbound loops around, comes to Old Stanford Road and on the left hand side on the outside of that gore area would probably be the best place for that location that we could plant it and beautify it. So then, as you come down off the southbound, you can see it. And then if you came off the northbound off ramp, you would be able to do the exact same thing. Meaning that you would then, as you're entering New Canaan, it would be there on your left hand side as you came forward. So we had done two and the thought was to complete the the trifecta and go forward. So.
I applaud this. This is, is, you know, ten years ago, it's kind of my idea.
Yes, yeah.
And was the large, the biggest disagreement, Tucker, that Bob Malazi and I ever had was the date to put on the saddle versus twenty four hours of of disagreement, but this is great. That's.
So the thought is we have to now just go get a, an encroachment permit from the state. There's actually a guidance and a handbook associated with this. We fit the guidance we fit. So we just have to go forward the encroachment permit in that point in time. Install it hopefully sometime in the spring and then the beautification league has already said that they would
plant that area for us and plant it similar to what they've done at the other two locations, which are, which are outstanding. So it's the same size as the ones on.
Same size, everything's the exact same, same manufacturer, Norwalk signs made the first two. We had Keith Simpson Associates help us with the design and the layout. So they did the first two, this one. So all, we'll be all in keeping together.
I'm not advocating this. I'm just asking if we ever considered having one coming in from the north.
We have, we're looking at other areas to try to get the gateways into town.
Sure.
It's a, gets a little bit, looking at it from, I come in one twenty three every day from Vista, so the, looking in that area as well and then possibly Ponus and then one twenty four. There's a couple of, but we'll, we'll chew away at them as we go.
Okay, I hopefully we don't have to wait another ten years, right?
Well, I knew nothing about this when I asked Tiger the other day whose agenda this was. I know, I don't know who the answer was, but.
That was, it's a longstanding one from back when we did the first two. The thought was to do the three.
Four years I've heard of this.
I apologize. The, so the, it was just a longstanding one sitting there. I had an intern work on it for an entire summer. We just couldn't get any traction with the state, to be honest with you. We went with probably four or five separate locations in that area and they said no to each one. So, you know, that was his, that was his, the high school intern, that's what he did. And we couldn't bring it to fruition, unfortunately. So at this point in time, I said, I need to clear out some of the old projects that are sitting there. This is one of them, so.
Well done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tax over payments, tax over one real estate and several automobile tax over payments on the tablets. I move, we approve the tax over payments. My favor. Proven legal fees, legal bills on the tablets. Approve the legal bills on the tablets.
Second year.
On favor. Yep, we're going to go into executive session, but we'll do some selecting comments for this one.
Yeah, I mean, last night we had a tripartite meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Town Council and Board of Finance. And I think with respect to the police, the new police facility. My takeaway was that the overwhelming sense was to keep the police department where it is currently in terms of location. To rehab the existing facility, to keep, keep the existing building and kind of gut it to the extent possible. Third, to move police out for the period of time that it takes to to rehab the building as opposed to keeping them there and, you know, having them work with construction going on. And then fourth, the need for a training facility in town for our police force. I think our police chief made a passionate articulate argument for a training facility in town. Training being one of the three keystones of having a great police force. And it's clear that, you know, we're, we're lacking in the ability to train our PD. And I think this is a very, very important component of the project. So I'm not asking for a vote, but I just, I think it would be helpful. And I know Town Council and Board of Finance have meetings coming up this week and and they will be getting a sense of where folks are on those bodies. I agree with what I think is the overwhelming majority. We keep the police department where it is, we rehab it. That's going to save us a lot of money vis a vis the alternatives. Whether it be a, a brand new building at the current site or an alternative site. I think the location is the best place. I, I think the police department is in the best place possible. It's, it's close to the schools, it's close to downtown, it's on a major road, et cetera, et cetera. The costs, as I said, augur well for the town. And I think thirdly, the alternative sites just don't work for a variety of reasons. We've talked about the Saks fields and, and, you know, paving over the Saks fields to put a PD. But the, the other sites that were discussed, the leaf pile, the lumberyard and and the other couple of sites that, you know, they, they just don't work. They're too expensive. Far more expensive than than rehabbing the existing building. We were talking about, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen million dollars more money. So.
Nick, you didn't pay close attention to the numbers.
That, well, I, I, I will take into consideration, Kevin, your view that we can sell the existing built, the existing site for value. But I, you know, my problem is, and it's, 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 look, we learned last night that if we decide to go down the route of rehabbing these existing police department, we can start digging in eight months. I, I would argue that if we tried to do an alternative site, let's just take Saks. Because Saks clearly has been at the top of your agenda.
At my agenda.
Well.
I never said that, Nick.
You.
Don't put words in my mouth.
Okay, you, you said, you told me two years ago, you thought that this was a good idea to put it in Saks. You did?
I told Michael Dine that. It was Stu, Sarabia's idea and identifies Stu Sarabia at the time, so.
Okay, well.
So, so that's still his favorite location. It's not my favorite location. I never said it.
Okay, that's fine, whatever. I can continue. I've received five, six hundred emails plus with respect to relocating the police department in Saks Fields. Ripping up the baseball fields and part, partially the soccer fields. And I can tell you, Kevin, I'm, I'm happy to share all of these with you. I have not received a single email in favor of doing that. And we have a petition out there that, that, that has a thousand signatures against it.
No one's advocating Saks at this point. I'm not advocating Saks.
Okay. Like my, 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 okay, my point is, I think we should, putting aside all other things, I, I, my point is, we, I think we should move to rehab the police department where it is and start the process as soon as possible. And we talked about this last night at the tripartite meeting. I think everybody, I think Steve Carl, I think Todd LaVie, I think we're all in agreement that this should, this process should go forward. We've done the diligence and I give you due regard with respect to looking at all the alternatives. I think somebody said we looked at sixty, started out with sixty alternative sites, whittled that down to thirteen or fourteen. Whittle that down further pursuant to our first meeting, all board meeting to four sites or five sites. I think now is the time to pull the trigger and move forward with the new police department. I think we owe it to Leon and his incredible team. You know, the existing police department is. Yeah, it's, it's, it's dingy, Cath, Kathleen. I mean, you and I talked about, it's, it's just, we need to pull the trigger and go forward. And I think discussions about alternative sites, we're beyond that. We, we should keep the police department where it is. And the most cost effective way forward is to rehab it. To move our officers out for sixteen months, whatever it takes. We can use Irwin for the detectives and for, you know, other, other personnel. It's going to cost us a little bit more money to move, move them out as opposed to keeping them there and having construction going on around them. But I think it's worth it and I think this is the way forward.
Thank you. I, I echo a lot of what Nick has to say, but I, I want to start first by thanking First Leckman and the two teams that work together to do, look at the alternative spaces, the existing space and the alternative space, because I think that is an important part of a process that we as a town should always undertake about, just about everything. And, and this was, I think, a very good process and I appreciate the opportunity to have the, the three boards come together and and review those. So thank you for doing that. The, from my perspective, having done the work and understanding the, the different opportunities and and challenges. I agree that I would support the renovate in place. I will tell you, having seen the existing conditions at the, the police department, we, we certainly need this as quickly as possible. I would also be in favor of considering a, a new building on the site. However, the economics just don't don't, don't make any sense. I think it was like thirteen to sixteen million dollar difference. Had it been maybe ten percent more or even fifteen percent more in terms of renovate versus brand new building with preservation in the front. I would say that I would kindly, I would really think about doing a new building there. But that said, the, the difference is too wide in terms of the cost. So, and I also absolutely support. If the renovation in place is approved, I would also agree that they should be moved out of the facilities while that construction was underway. And finally, the training center, absolutely, I, I absolutely agree that that should be. And I think if there's a great alternative, which it sounded like there was one, to have that also in place. We did have a, a training center, if you will. That's now a closet in the current building. But I think having it in close proximity to the police department is a very important opportunity. So that's my two cents.
I would say, you know, having studied this for two years, I think it's interesting that the people closest to it, Chief Pralikowski, Paul Foley as commissioner, Stuart Soubine, the prior commissioner of ten years, myself, we all believe in new building is, is necessary and appropriate. And I think it's a mistake to renovate a building that's eighty three years old, ninety three years old. The people, as Paul Foley said last night, people in Darien regret their, their renovation in place. It has a lot of risks and additional expenses. It probably won't come in at the seventeen, eighteen million dollar mark, probably will come in at more. And we're not going to be happy with it. So I, you know, I have educated view that when you have something as important as a police department, you, you find a location to build a new.
I'm, I'm happy that we're sitting in a town hall and it's been renovated, I think.
So this is all, this is all new.
I understand, but, but your, your, your office is in the original building.
Actually working in that building with the windows that, right, working in a building that was renovated, it's not an ideal work environment.
I, I.
And I don't want our police to be working in the less than ideal work environment.
I'm so glad that we, we, I'm so glad that we renovated, that we kept this town hall facade, which was done in like two movies.
Can I finish? I mean, I, I let me speak. So anyway, so I think, you know, in a town as big as New Canaan, with all the land we have, the fact that we can't find another location for a new building. And you and I have worked on housing matters for years. I think the opportunity to, to convert the South Avenue location into housing, it's very hard for us to make it moderate income housing, but it clears a valuable property for residential. I was surprised to see a police commissioner last night say that she'd rather have a police department institutional use with a fire arms range there over a residential building. We have a lot of pressure to have multifamily housing in town. And so I just think it's, it's something we need to, you know, we're going to have continued pressure for multifamily housing. And this gives us an opportunity to, to have a new building somewhere and. and at a net cost lower than what we're gonna end up with the renovation. So I personally, I think it's a mistake. I can't support it. And we'll see where the-
So will you continue to enter into contracts pursuant to an alternative site under $10,000 with-
Let me explain. So when people, when laymen say there's a, there's a traffic problem on South Avenue, there is a traffic problem. It's called three schools, right? And, and the traffic problem, I'm looking to ameliorate. And the reason we had Michael Galanti look at this is because people said, first of all, police department, the department there does not add to traffic. That's clear. You need that professional opinion to understand it doesn't add to traffic. Is there a way to ameliorate the traffic at the high school in Saks in the morning?
So this is a coincidence? That, that it just happens to coincide with the discussion about Saks as a new location for the police department?
The reason for this was the high school location, which is still, is now my favorite location.
So your favorite location is changed from Saks to Waven?
Don't say that again. I never said I was your favorite Saks location.
Stipulated, that's fine. So, but you are now saying-
High school is my favorite location among the choices because we-
The high school, you mean Waveney Park?
It's not Waveney Park.
It is to, to most people in town.
Where the Board of Education was gonna be built.
And, and wasn't, and it wasn't built.
For financial reasons, right?
Uh, no, for political reasons.
Paid rent for 30 years. Crazy, 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 crazy.
Understood. And I think I've commended you for, for 223.
I've seen so many mistakes in prior first selectmen that I have to deal with. I don't want to mistake the future first selectmen is gonna deal with in terms of renovated police department on South Avenue.
The, 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 the location you're referring to went to referendum, is I believe, and was voted down partly.
Nick, sometimes when you believe what's best in the canyon, you have, you have to be honest about-
And I respect that, Kevin, but I, I, I just, I, I, I think from a financial perspective, from a cultural perspective, we should just leave the police department where it is.
In a renovated building, it's not a wise decision. So that's, that I think is enough. We'll see where the Town Council is and the Board of Finance is. And also, you know, Leon Pralikowski, last week with the other police chiefs, said he'd like to see a state, regional, state provided regional training facility, right? We had discussions, we began discussions with Wilton a year ago. They're gonna, they're gonna go to their voters for the new police department in January. Ridgefield is coming forward with a new police department. They both would like to share a firearm, firearms training facility. Most of our officers live in the northeast of New Canaan. You can talk to Darien, the officers don't train during their shifts. Everybody pays overtime for training and it's something that, you know, so when you have to, when you look at all the facts, you actually, I come to a conclusion.
And, and look, I think we're all in favor of training. That's a separate issue. I mean, we, that's an add-on. I mean, we need-
Not if it's the South Avenue.
What do you mean?
Not if the training facility is at South Avenue.
I'm not following you.
That's the current proposal.
That is the current.
To build a, to build a separate building at South Avenue.
Right, but as, as we talked about last night, that can be done later. It can be, I mean, you know, we, we can start digging for the police department. You know, putting aside the training facility, that's, that's a separate, that could be done a year or two years.
Pursue discussions with Ridgefield.
But I don't see what that has to do with the location of the police department, the training facility.
Right now, the proposal is to build the police firearms training behind the police-
I understand, but they, I'm not sure where, you know, I personally-
I would, I don't think we should bring that to P and Z because it probably won't be approved.
Okay, but, but you're missing the larger point, which is where we put the police department. We need a training facility somewhere, whether it's regional, whether it's someplace else in New Canaan or whether it's behind the existing facility. We need a training facility. We all agree on that.
I agree with that.
So, but, you know, the point is where do we put the police department?
I would go anywhere, so.
I just asked about the regional training facility. I wasn't aware. Is a certain location being considered now?
Yeah, they, Wilton has a plan that they discussed with us and Paul Foley basically said we are not interested. So I, I think we need to go through a process to make that decision.
I'm in favor of process, so, yeah, okay.
Me too.
Enough on that?
Enough on that.
Okay, I would make a few comments before we go into executive session on COVID. We've had an uptick since last week, the end of the week with 19 cases. We have 14 so far this week, so we're going in the wrong direction. I'm very concerned. People, you know, act as though the pandemic is over. People who travel should not act like they can just attend large events. It's bad enough they affect, they infect their families when they get back. But if you travel, please get tested and, and isolate until you know you're, you're, you haven't come back infected. I'm very, you know, the, there were eight deaths at a nursing home in Canaan, Connecticut the other day and dozens of people, residents, are staff infected, so.
To be clear, that's Canaan, not New Canaan.
Yeah, and actually, this is one, publicized one. There's other deaths going on in Connecticut. So this, this is not over. People have to continue to take it seriously. If you're not vaccinated, please get vaccinated. And the vaccination clinics are being very successful. We did over 1,000 young people at the high school last week. We have other planned vaccination clinics. We're doing daily vaccination at, at my college for people who are eligible. And we're doing the bi-vid test at Irwin, so. Now I'd like to turn to-
I would just say to Kevin, get, get your booster.
I got it yesterday. I have a little bit of, little bit of, yeah, I got it yesterday. My wife got it yesterday.
Which, which one did you get?
Moderna, I had no-
Moderna is the one to get, folks. You didn't, didn't hear that?
And you can mix and match.
You can mix and match, but Moderna is, is, is the best. Paid advertising, I, I just-
You on this topic?
No, I don't.
Okay, now I have some news. The show already broke in the press, but we were trying to keep it under wraps until there was official action taken in Norwalk. But, you know, we are very, very unhappy to lose our excellent CFO to the Norwalk Board of Education. Linda has done a fabulous job for us for three years and I'm personally very, very sad to see him go. And the only way we could have kept him was to offer him the opportunity to be head of both the Board of Education and the town here as other, some other towns do and the superintendent declined that opportunity. So we just have to lose Linda to a better opportunity in Norwalk, so.
I just want to also express my gratitude, Linda, for all that you've done for our town as CFO and, and, you know, I always think it's a great tribute to the, the talent that we have in, in our town. When someone taps you on the shoulder and offers you more money and, and a great opportunity. I know that's where you currently live too, so your commute will be a little shorter. But we'll miss you, but I also know that you're not too far away. And I look forward to the process of, of going forward in terms of considering our next CFO. And I, and I know that being a neighbor, that we can still maybe count on you from time to time for some good advice. So thank you so much.
So, you know, Linda, we're gonna miss you. You, you've done a fantastic job. I'm disappointed that we couldn't make it work where you could kind of oversee both the Board of Ed and the town and other, other municipalities have achieved that. And, and, but I, I get, you know, where Brian's coming from. Best of luck to you, my friend. You are a really good person. Apart from being a great CFO and, and that means a lot, so we will miss you. Thank you.
And then, so we're working with the Board of Finance budget model process. We're gonna have a discussion for the tomorrow. And then we have the Department Management meeting tomorrow. We're gonna begin the budget process. It's gonna be very difficult to keep the the amount to be collected by the compensation flat, which is our goal. But we will begin the process to where we come up. That's my comments.
I just have one comment and this is really about scheduling next meeting. I absolutely appreciate where regular meetings are important and-
As indicated today, I mean, you know, sometimes we just have to do things.
You have to change it. So that's why more than a month before the December 14th meeting, because I'm very conscious of that.
It would have to be a special meeting, that's the problem.
Not if you do it before, more than 30 days. And that was my, so I, unfortunately, am not able to attend the December 14th Board of Selectmen meeting I had offered more than 30 days ago to, to make a switch with the Selectmen's Advisory Committee, which is on Monday, that's the day before, since two out of the three of us actually participate in both those meetings. So I, Kevin wrote and said that I'm choosing to attend a meeting that involves personal financial gain over the town's regular business. And I couldn't, I couldn't say, absolutely not. And I, as you know, we all have-
Actually required under SEC rules to attend a certain number of meetings?
I-
And get paid for meeting?
No, I'm not paid for meeting, no. And so I, we all have different responsibilities, different jobs and so forth. One of mine is also serving on the board of, as a Fortune 100 insurance company. And I gave plenty of notice in terms of the opportunity to change. There's only three of us. Hopefully, that's easy to make a change. I've attended every single meeting of the Board of Selectmen without asking for any change, even when I've had to call in from vacation. I have no problem with that. And so this was just a kind request to, to make the change, just flip it to one day earlier. You know, Kevin, you said that you think it's an ethics code violation and I argue that it's not. I'm just asking for an opportunity to change for something that, you know, I don't do often. In fact, this is the first time and-
I think it'd be a very bad precedent. We know, we know when our meetings are scheduled and we have to be here.
I do, I, I agree.
I, I think this is ridiculous. I've, I've been on this board for 10 years and, you know, there's three of us. We make changes to accommodate one of the three or two of the three or three of the three, whatever. So I, I just, I don't understand this. So I support Selectmen Corporation.
There's nothing on the agenda, so, okay.
That was a Selectmen's comment. So if you'd be so kind to reconsider possibly switching it to the 13th, I'd be most grateful.
Again, I, I, there, there's just three of us. Surely we can-
On this subject, comments in general.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I have no other comments.
Okay, so you and I will move to go into executive session on the 22 Elm Street.
Second.
Thank you all and we won't vote when we come out of the meeting. Tigers, welcome to stay and Tucker and Linda.